Well, good morning, everyone. I will now call to order the October 9, 2025, Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. And I'll start out with County Administrator Gary Schmidt. Would you please call the roll for us?
Yes, Chair, thank you. First, staff support today. Clerk to the Board, Andrew Giraki. County Council is Acting County Council. Sean Lilligren, Commissioners West and Schrader are out of the office at separate events. Roll call, Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner Helm.
Here.
Chair Roberts.
Here. Thank you, Gary. I will now ask everybody to stand and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning, everyone. And our first item up this morning is public communication. So we're going to take testimony is limited to three minutes per person, and I just ask your comments be respectful and courteous. As a reminder, you can also email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and they will be accepted as part of the public record. I will take in-person testimony first, and I am going to turn to our amazing clerk. If you would please moderate the in-person virtual testimony for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a reminder, if you're attending this meeting in person today and wish to comment during general public communication, to please fill out a blue card that can be found by the box near the center doors. I will call on them in the order that they are received. First card I've received is from Mr. Brainard Brower. Mr. Brainard Brower, please come forward. You'll have three minutes.
So I'm Brainard Brower from Redland. I came back today, and I think anybody who knows me knows I'm straight about what I say, so I don't say something that I don't really mean. I left, only been here a couple times before, to this commission. I left with one underlying thought, and that is the change that public can come here and testify upfront. And throughout the meeting, sitting all the way through, you solicited public testimony at pretty much every step. I've never seen that before. So I'm disappointed, I'm disheartened that there's not more residents and citizens participating, particularly at this time in our nation. I mean, this board, I don't know any of the board very well, hardly at all, but I know there's diverse perspectives, for sure, which is great, and you're working together. And so, in this time in particular, I'd like to encourage citizens in this county to come and participate locally and step away from what doesn't work in our nation, you know? Let's make some difference here. And I appreciate you listening. You know, I mean, yeah, I came primarily because of Wit's End was septic, and I'm kind of a little traumatized from it, so I guess I'm stepping back for the moment and dealing with a few other things. But I've gotten some constructive feedback since, you know, with the new supervisor, you know, hired and stuff. So at least I know what the constraints are, and I am optimistic that with an appeal to DEQ, it's a close thing, we may affect some positive change for everybody, I've kind of thought. So thank you for listening to people. So I hope more citizens come and participate and feel like they can make, but constructively. There's too many citizens, especially right now, neighbors picking on each other, just online, just for stupid stuff, you know? It's really, that is also evident right now. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the positive message. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, that's what I left with, you know? So I had to at least come back and say it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Les Poole. Mr. Les Poole, please come forward. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. I'm here to yell at you and refute everything he said. Les Poole, I own property in the county, and I do know all of you, and I echo what the previous speaker said. And it's good to see some evening meetings back on the agenda. That's something that has been, well, Commissioner Savis can tell you, from the time he was elected, I've been a big proponent of public participation, and I encourage folks to show up. It does make a difference. A little short on sleep, but I'll try to be quick. I've got some concerns about the monstrous $2 billion Portland Water Bureau filtration plant that's being constructed on the county line. And I'm not asking so much for action as much as awareness to the speeding trucks, safety issues, road damage that's occurring. I know the county's had some promises that, you know, you'll be compensated, but as someone that has family and a lot of history out there, I've personally gone out, and it's not pretty. And the handling of it has just been, well, I'll use the word questionable because I'm not an attorney. So please advocate for the folks and realize that the quality of the water and what this is going to cost to all the ratepayers, whether they're in Monloma County or not, is astronomical. Couple of quick words about ODOT and transportation. How many have noticed that while ODOT never funded removing the bottleneck on I-205 between Stafford and the bridge, it continues to be two lanes wide? But if you look in the right lane, you'll see they're converting that right lane into bus only. They're doing that on I-205 as well. As someone that's got considerable experience and involvement in transportation, and it goes back to, you know, 25 years ago, I find it amazing, the arrogance and lack of public involvement and lack of accountability for what ODOT and Metro, the folks that have control over our planning and future, are doing. And so my message to you folks is just watch out for us as best you can. I know it's difficult times, and you can bet I'll be back again. Thanks.
Thank you, Les.
This is a final call. If you are attending this meeting in person, have not yet had the opportunity to speak, and wish to comment during general public communication, to please fill out a blue card and deposit them in the box by the center door. Mr. Chair, seeing no other members of the public physically present, I'll now move to those attending virtually. If you're attending this meeting virtually and wish to comment, this is your opportunity to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. This is a final call. If you're attending this meeting virtually and wish to comment during public communication, to please raise your hand. Mr. Chair, seeing no other members of the public either physically or virtually present who wish to comment today.
Okay, thank you very much. I will now close the public communication portion. We'll move on, and I'll turn to Gary as to what's next on the agenda for today.
Thank you, Chair. Next is a presentation, recognition of National Association of Counties Award to Clackamas County. Our Public and Government Affairs Team, or Director Tony Holowetsky, Director of Public and Government Affairs, will present, and then we'll do a photo op after the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here this morning to share and to celebrate an astounding achievement from the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. The team has received a 2025 Achievement Award from the National Association of Counties, or NACO. Before I talk about this award, I'd like to just take a moment to tell you a bit about NACO and why this recognition is such a big deal. NACO represents more than 3,000 counties across the nation, serving over 80% of the U.S. population. Their mission is to strengthen county government and help us build safe, healthy, and vibrant communities. Each year, NACO recognizes county programs that truly make a difference, programs that are innovative, effective, and produce real measurable results. They also look for efforts that help residents better understand and engage with local government. These awards celebrate the dedication of public employees who turn creative ideas into meaningful action. And here in Clackamas County, we've built a strong record of just that, earning more than a dozen NACO awards since 2020. This year, I'm especially proud to recognize a new honoree, or a repeat honoree, I just learned, the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for its innovative strategic analysis unit. This unit plays a vital role behind the scenes. It gathers and analyzes data, produces reports and dashboards, and offers clear, actionable insights that help guide decisions throughout the sheriff's office. Their work helps leadership make smarter, data-informed choices, improving efficiency, targeting resources where they're needed most, and ensuring that programs reflect the priorities and needs of our community. In doing so, the team helps create safer, stronger, and more livable communities, and builds trust in good government. These are central goals of your strategic priorities, and the Strategic Analysis Unit is a shining example of that in action. So today, please join me in congratulating the sheriff's office and its Strategic Analysis Unit on this well-deserved recognition. It is now my pleasure to invite the following members of the sheriff's team to come forward, and Commissioners, I'd like you to join our award recipients for a photo group, for a group photo, sorry. So, I'm going to call Cecilia Bailey, Jeff Collett, Brittany Heath, and finally Sheriff Brandenburg to the front of the room. Congratulations again to the entire team and to all of us.
All right. Thank you. Come on, Commissioners, let's go grab a photo. We'll take a couple photos here, okay? One, two, three. Perfect. All right, thank you. Paul, did you want to make a comment on this or the communication?
Communication.
Okay, I'll come around. So before we move on, I just want to take an opportunity to thank the sheriff's office staff for just amazing work, and I really so much believe in data-driven response with really, you can also show the outcomes and measures in improving safety in our community, and it's deploying resources in the most effective way. So I look back in the years in New York and Comstat and how they first started that, and so it's just exciting to kind of see how you're deploying resources in the most effective way, and you guys helped drive that. So thank you all very much for your hard work on that. Anything else for my colleagues? That being said, thank you again for coming. Congratulations on your award. I wanted to step back. I missed Commissioner Savis' light come on. I think he has a comment on public communication, so Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe encourage, I don't think you've been out there yet, Chair, maybe even not, Commissioner Helm, but at least the issue that Mr. Poole brought regard to the water treatment plant, though it is technically a land use matter from our role in that project, so I'm going to be really careful. I think the concerns that both the county has raised, members of the public, and the community nearby, is the one point that Mr. Poole made, and that's really the impacts on the neighboring properties. And this happens to be built on the county, Monloma County line, county line, so Clackamas is essentially, from a road standpoint, impacts, neighborhood standpoint, is kind of getting the brunt of this. I just think that either, maybe y'all going out there and taking a look at it and seeing what's up against there, and also looking at the renderings and what's going to be built there, you know, I'm a big supporter of this structure. I totally, I mean, people don't really, aren't really aware of this, but Portland's been in a difficult position, the Water Bureau that is, in a difficult position trying to meet the national water quality standards. And so they've had some excursions in their, in their water at times, which is the drinking water. That, the Bull Run watershed, the big chunk of it is actually in Clackamas County, but it's nationally protected watershed, and the water that's being impounded there is also in the county, but for the most part is nationally protected. But that said, the filtration plant is really something as a result of a lawsuit, basically, or not being compliant, so I'm not attacking or criticizing the city of Portland or the Water Bureau for doing what they are doing to keep water, the quality of water, safe. I guess it's really how we better mitigate, or the Portland Water Bureau better helps Clackamas County with regards to the impacts to both the community and the roads nearby. And as I understand it, I don't think that we are 100% protected, and I think that we're going to be bearing the brunt of that from the road department aspect as far as the roads, let alone the neighbors. It is something in a place, by the way, I mean, it's, again, the water's there, but if you've ever toured the Bull Run watershed within the gated area, and also on each end entrance and exits, if you will, you'll see it as one of the most magnificently beautiful places in the region, in the county, and it also includes part of Monloma County as well. That said, I do have a, you know, I can sympathize with local community with this big facility going up, which doesn't really fit this serene, pristine area. Can't deal with, I mean, we can't fix that. I'm not here criticizing that, but I do think that would be, Chair, especially in your capacity, would be a good thing, maybe to talk with Portland and see what they can do to smooth things over a little bit and not let, not let us get, or suffer the consequences of all this to some degree. I mean, we got to mitigate it, and I just encourage you to maybe go out and take a look at it and understand, talk to the members of the community, understand what they're up against.
Thank you, Paul. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Consent Agenda for the Board of County Commissioners. Item A, Elected Officials. One, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. B, Transportation Development. One, approval of a resolution declaring the public necessity and purpose for the acquisition of rights of way, easements, and fee property, and authorizing good faith negotiations, and if necessary, condemnation proceedings for the Bear Creek Culvert and Malala Avenue Shoulders Project. Project value is $2,146,718. Funding's to the community road fund and county-wide transportation system development charges. No county general funds are involved. C, Health Housing and Human Services. One, approval of a revenue integrative agreement with the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs to operate the County Veteran Services Office. Agreement value is $1,197,076 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs and $910,486 in budgeted county general funds. Two, approval of an amendment to a local subrecipient grant agreement with central city concern for the Chesapeake Mental Health Housing operations. Amendment value $65,000 for nine months. Total agreement value is $504,600.72 for three years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority and Support of Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, sir. Okay, do any of my colleagues wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
I move we approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
All right, Commissioner Helm has moved to approve the Consent Agenda. It's been seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Helm?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Motion passes, three to zero, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Gary?
Thank you. Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I'd like to recognize our county employees and our programs for the great work they do for our community. During my time today, I want to recognize our Veterans Service Office within the Department of Health, Housing, and Human Services. As you know, Commissioners, our Veterans Services Team is very small, like 3.5 staff, that support all the veterans who live within Clackamas County. They do phenomenal work, and here is but one example. A resident recently wrote in, "I wanted to send along a quick email about my wonderful experience with the Clackamas County Veterans Service Office over the past few months. I currently live in Lake Oswego, and I am a veteran of Operation Iraqi Freedom. I've been having trouble over the past few years with a few claims that I submitted on my own, and I was told to reach out to Colin Black at the Clackamas County Veterans Service Office for additional help. I've met with Colin several times, and he and his staff have been incredibly professional, knowledgeable, eager to help, and were vital in my follow-up claims being successful. I now receive medical care for the rest of my life for my service-connected autoimmune disease. This only happened because of Colin and his team and the office. Please tell him and his team to keep up the great work, and thank you for putting veterans first. Thank you, Colin, and the entire Veterans Service, small but mighty team, for the work like this they do for our veterans and our community. Outstanding work." And then quickly, before I go, I do want to give a clarification and an update to an item you discussed on Tuesday of this week, Commissioners, at Issues on October 7th. There is a request from the sheriff's office to support a jail electronic system camera upgrade for the jail, which is desperately needed. And as you recall, I made my concerns known about the funding source for that project and that the staff report was not clear. I am not perfect, and I make mistakes, and I made a mistake. The sheriff's office actually submitted the correct, an original staff report with the correct funding identified, and me and my staff, in a form of clarity, shortened the title, which eliminated some really key language. So I am sorry that I, it was inadvertent, it was not on purpose, but it was an error that was made, and it caused an uncomfortable public discussion that I was the cause of on Tuesday. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I am not perfect, I make mistakes, and I made one. I'm owning it, I know, shocking, I know. I'm apologizing for that. I sent this email, an email to the sheriff and her team, and you Commissioners, I'm now publicly stating it. So the correction is, next Thursday, when this is on the Consent Agenda, the correct title's being used, and I'll be much more careful in the future. So I wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you for your time today, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just want to kind of repeat what I said. Thank you, Gary, for correcting that and taking responsibility for that portion of it. You know, my concern was the total cost being truly reflected in the report, and my other concern was just getting, or question or request was to get a better understanding of some, of what is in the capital construction element of that part, portion of the general fund. So what's all there, what are the timelines and so forth? And also beings of which, I think you called me mentioning, are there properties that we can, that we should not be holding on to that are just going to cost us money? And perhaps that can help fund some of these repairs. I mean, we got to look, we're going to look under every pillow.
Couch cushion.
Couch cushion everywhere, really, for a long, long time. So I think we're going to have to actually take a whole different, and I know that we've done a lot, Gary. I don't want to diminish the fact that we have done a lot of cost cutting, but I think we got to be a little bit more creative, I think, as, you know, our, not this Tuesday, but Tuesday last, when we had our Budget Committee members here, just the realities of what we see in the forecast, it's kind of very concerning for me.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Helm?
Thank you for your transparency and honesty. I respect that, and if we make a mistake, none of us are perfect. Owning it is obviously the best thing to do. I just think, too, that we're a bit hypersensitive when it comes to the budget right now, and I know that shortening a title can sometimes mess things up, but you're forgiven. It's okay. We'll, we'll get over it, but I think that there's a lot that we need to be aware of ourselves when it comes to this budget, and as we move forward, it's a pretty bleak picture, but I think we can move through it okay. But thank you for your honesty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Gary?
No. Thank you, Chair.
Right, so we'll transition to Commissioner Communication, and Commissioner Savis, you want to start us off?
Yeah, yeah. I shared earlier with the Chair and the Administrator, perhaps if we could maybe do more to hear from our elected officials. I, you know, it wasn't that long ago, I know, when in a previous commission, that maybe at times that was not available, if you will, and I know complications of everything that's happened in the last five or six years, you know, plays a role in all of that. But today, I just want to do a shout-out to our Tax Assessor Bronson Ruta. I've been working with him, and a misunderstanding of, I'll be brief on this as much as I can, but for decades, there's been this messaging from, at times, you know, for elected officials, city in particular, that the unincorporated areas are not paying their fair share. And I live in unincorporated, I think a lot of people, well, half the county lives in unincorporated, so, you know, I, when I try to get to the bottom of those things, I realize, well, wait a minute, there's certain areas that are actually paying more than their fair share that are unincorporated, and really, sometimes cities are actually being subsidized by the unincorporated areas. So without getting into the library districts, without getting into any of that, for the record, when you get your tax statement, if you're unincorporated, you pay to the county $2.97 per thousand, and the incorporated areas, like cities, would pay $2.40, so that's a .57 differential. So a number of misunderstandings in the community came up here recently, and I want to thank again our Tax Assessor Bronson Ruta for, number one, stepping in that space and clarifying. He did a great presentation to the Oak Lodge Community Council here last, late last month, just a couple weeks ago. Brilliant presentation. I'm sure if he had more time, he could have done even better, but I just want to, his willingness to come forward and engage the community and be present, I think in that setting, in any setting, as I interpret it, was, it meant a lot to me. It meant a lot to the community as well. So Tax Assessor Ruta, thank you so much, and again, looking forward to the next opportunity to hear from you all. But I think it'd be nice to, I guess, engage our elected officials and kind of repair some of the past issues that were here, that, make sure they know they're welcome to present to us. What I wanted to talk about today a little bit, knowing that around the corner here is the ribbon-cutting for the Oak Lodge Library and the NCPRD Concord Facility. I want to thank Commissioner Helm for spending, yesterday morning, as we drove through, I gave Chair Roberts that same tour here a couple, three months ago, so I gave Chair, I'm not Chair Helm, but Commissioner Helm, that same tour yesterday, and I took her to that little, that little tiny grassy patch there that was supposed to be a park, the former Evangelica Retreat Center, which is 99.999% homes and .00001, a green patch, that is supposed to be the mitigation for the park that they never got. So, and that sits in a severely underserved area. And, you know, I have, you know, and it's okay, it comes with the territory. I will take my, I'll take the hits and the punches and the criticisms for standing up for the little guy or the areas in the county that don't get much attention, and I've taken my share. And, but nonetheless, on the bright side, you know, we're making progress in the Jenny's Lodge area, hopefully. We're trying to work with the school district. Chair, I might need your help with that, too. I want to let you know that we're trying to work with the school district to make sure that they give us a 25-year use of that school property that I drove you by, so that we can get... they give us a 25-year use of that school property that I drove you by, so that we can apply and get the grant. Without that 25-year security of use of that park, we don't get the grant. So that, that's the key issue. But, but getting back to the Oak Lodge piece as well, you know, I don't know how we're going to do it on the 18th, but there's a lot of people that have put literally hours and tremendous effort, unselfishly, on behalf of the community, or the library, or the community center, or the property. There's a lot of different passions about different elements of this, and I want to make sure that we recognize those folks. And, and I know we'll have a lot of people there, and, but hopefully, it'll be less about us and more about their efforts in the community, you know, primarily. But I just want to let everyone know that, you know, I, you know, Gary, you know this, we always try to recognize people as best we can. We don't always, we don't always remember or get it right. And, and no matter what, no matter, every time we, not every time, but when we did the Glassstone Library ribbon cutting, I remember in particular, one of the community members came up to me and said, you know, I'm really upset because you didn't, you didn't recognize me. Not, not me, but us, the presentation. Whether that was directed at me or not is not really relevant. But, you know, I, I do think that sometimes people, people that want the credit, you know, hopefully are the people that deserve the credit, right? And again, getting back to the people that deserve the credit really are some of those citizens that sat on those committees and, you know, sacrificed time with their family to be at a meeting religiously over and over and over, night after night, or week after week, or month after month for years. Those are the people that need to be recognized. So I want to make sure we do our best on the 18th, do just that. Chair, I yield back.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Helm?
I attended the AOC, Association of Oregon Counties District Eight meeting yesterday. That was very interesting. I think that's all I can say about it. That was kind of my, I will say, my first introduction to AOC. I didn't, I, when I was appointed, I came in like at the wrong time to go through the college, the classes down there in Salem. Legislature was in session, it was kind of a beehive down there, but I, I need to learn more about what they do. It was, I would say, it was kind of a hostile environment, very interestingly. There was some hot heads in the room, and kind of fascinating. I mean, we're, I think we were there more for a discussion than anything, and I, I will just say, it was, it was a very interesting introduction to AOC and what it's all about. So I've got some homework to do. I'll yield back. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. So just a couple quick comments. Gary and I met with Clackamas ESD. Great opportunity to meet with superintendents throughout Clackamas County, and for us to kind of have a dialogue about what's going on at schools, what the county is doing, and what we could also do. So it was interesting. We had a number of questions about some traffic issues that Gary's fallen up on, and also some other questions that they had asked us that we're working on. I think the, the issue that we had a lot of discussion about is just youth dealing with self-harm and depression and suicide, and really, some strategies about helping reduce that. And then we also had a, really, a robust conversation about homeless youth and the challenges that I think we're all facing. And again, I'll kind of reiterate, out of the, there's 1,188 total individuals experiencing homelessness, and out of those, there's 191 are unsheltered youth, 18 to 24, and out of that, there's 149 who they consider chronically homeless. And so that population obviously also impacts the schools. And with that, which we've had conversation before, I also kind of want to come back and kind of reiterate the concern with the Clackamas Service Center and the great work they do to kind of help provide food and services for this population and, and others. And so Celeste Roman, the executive director there, one of the things, questions we had is about, you know, how the quantity and amount of services provided to youth, and she, it was really, they do, really do an amazing job, that they reach a tremendous amount of youth. It's kids, folk, and partners, including Lot Whitcomb Elementary, Oak Grove Elementary, Wichita City Center, Estacada School District, Milwaukee High School, and it's totaling over 4,000 people each month that they reach out to, and, which is in supports, they have showed serving unhoused kids and youth at at least 500 per month. Again, Commissioner Helm and I have had meetings there and conversations with their struggles. They have approximately $390,000 short still to raise by the end of the year to keep the food hub open for 2026, so I wanted to give a plug for the great work that they do again. And the other issue, just wanted to comment on the great work that the county does on positive prevention and positive youth development, and the health centers that, that are in our schools. And I, and I don't think a lot of people realize it, because, I'll be honest, I didn't realize we had health school-based centers in as many schools as we do. So I wanted to just cover those real quickly. So Adrian Nelson High School, that's on Park Lane in Happy Valley, they have one there. They have one at Clackamas High School, Estacada High School, Milwaukee High School, one in Oregon City High School, Rex Putnam High School, Sandy High School, and gives the opportunity for youth to seek help in those clinics in those schools. To me, that's just a great service the county does and provides to schools, and so it was a really a great conversation. Gary, thank you for joining me there, and I just think it's important we have that kind of ongoing conversation about how to support our, our youth in schools today. So with that, I have nothing else. I want to give, Gary, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, Chair, thank you.
All right. Well, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, thank you for joining us today, and if there's no further business, seeing none, this meeting will be adjourned. Thank you.